City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 is now five o'clock. The city clerk, please call roll call.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Parkchavinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Does the turn of the quorum, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, not tuning for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the city council, please come up to the podium and do so if items are not on the agenda. I see none. Approval minutes for the minutes of March 6th, regular meeting and March 12th work session. Move. Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? I see none, roll call please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Parkchavinsky?
Yes.
Riappell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid hearings, none. Scheduled public hearings. Number three, public hearing to consider final approval of Sandy's first re-subdivision. I will get a motion to open public hearing. Move. Move by Vedder.
Second.
Second by Riappell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign. Public hearing for Sandy's first re-subdivision approval is now open. Nancy, you want to come up?
Excuse me, just making sure that you're aware that this is the 40-foot easement that we're granting hardware hang with the purchase of the property from the substation. So, if anybody has any questions.
I see none, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Move. Move by Grassel, second by Riappell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to number four, public hearing to consider special use permit application for Verizon Wireless and Valley Golf Course for reconstruction of a monopole cell tower. Is there a motion?
Open the public hearing.
Motion by Parkchavinsky to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Grassel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Golstad?
Yes, just so that we can have a little bit of order in the public hearing tonight. Essentially, anybody that wants to speak can just come up when they're called, state their name, their address. You'd be able to present any type of documents or exhibits that you would like. If you do have something that you want in the record, I just ask that you provide it to Megan so that she can actually mark it and put it in the exhibit record. I have a docket for it. Presently, the city has the application. Essentially, we have 23 exhibits that are going to be in the record. It's everything to do with the special permit that was applied. It was the documents that were attached to the special use permit application. It has the information that was provided by Verizon through their consultant, Ed Buell. I do have the minutes from the planning commission meeting. I do, Mr. Parker, have included the previous email with the attachments that you provided for the planning and zoning meeting as a part of the record, just for your notification. I do also have the public notifications, the letters that went out, the Owl Consulting March 5th revised report from the consultant, Garrett Lysick. And we also have the work session minutes that were approved by the city, as well as the audio and the video from the February 27th, 2018 work session that was held to discuss this matter. We will also have Mr. Buell, Buellie and Valley Golf, if anybody wants to, to be able to present any evidence on their behalf. We do have our consultant here, if there's any questions regarding the report that he can answer from the public. And the reason that we're here is basically to allow the public to express their approval or concerns regarding this. This is not a hearing, so to speak, for cross-examination purposes. It's for you, the council, to be able to hear the concerns, obtain any evidence from the public, as well as the applicant, so that you can make a decision, informed decision, on the evidence and the record regarding this decision. Essentially, after the public has spoke, we're going to ask that this matter be adjourned till March 20th.
11th.
Or, excuse me, to March 27th, excuse me, which time it'll be placed in the minutes. And we will be back here on March 27th to make a further discussion and decision on the application. So, for that purpose, I'm going to provide this to Megan, the exhibits that are part of the record for the city. And then, if anybody else would like to start. You're called on by Mr. Holstead. Vote and state your name and record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holstead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eddie Buell. I'm here with Buell Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless. We are the applicant for the application in front of you. You are likely familiar with this application. We have been discussing it on and off for some time. Verizon has evaluated multiple locations for a facility to solve the data coverage issue, and this location suits that goal the best. Will also comply with the zoning requirements for a special use permit. The third-party report confirms the gap in data coverage and that no nearby structures are able to cover that gap. Verizon has redesigned the foundation of this proposed tower to ensure that two additional carriers would be able to house equipment within the canister from a structural standpoint. I also understand that many residents have brought forth some concerns regarding property values, and would like to read an excerpt from an article published in 2016 by the American Bar Association in their Property and Probate magazine. The article is titled "Cellphone Towers Do Not Affect Property Values," and this has been sent to Mr. Golstad for anyone wanting to review it in its entirety. The excerpt reads, "In most jurisdictions, proposed new cell towers must undergo some sort of public application process involving a public hearing. Given the chance, those in the area will oppose any proposed new tower. While the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits jurisdictions from denying cellphone tower applications on the basis of alleged ill-health effects, neighbors invariably argue that a new tower will adversely affect property values, so the pending tower application should be rejected. Appraisers argue to the contrary. Cell towers, they point out, are much like other modern infrastructure. Although cell towers may initially be noticed, they quickly fade into the background and have no appreciable effect on value, just as telephone poles, utility lines, streetlights, and other infrastructure of modern life do not affect value. Although this conclusion may seem counterintuitive to many, and certainly those opposing a new tower will vehemently disagree, it is borne out by the statistics and studies. Now, this proposed telecommunications facility should be even less noticeable than a typical installation due to its low height and canister design. Their proposed site is located at the end of a dead-end street and has natural screening from nearby trees and shrubbery. The design is a stealth canister with no visible antennas and will not have any lighting located on the tower. This application has been reviewed and discussed by the Planning Commission, who recommended approval for the special use permit back on November 9th, 2017. Given that a neutral party has confirmed the need for a tower at this location and that we have complied with all zoning requirements, we are respectfully requesting that the city council heed the recommendation from the Planning Commission and approve the application. I'm very happy to answer any additional questions from the council."
Does anybody have any questions? I see none, sir. Thank you. Anybody from the public would like to come up and speak? Mr. Neal, Mr. Parker, Mr. Golstead, Mr. Johnson, anybody? Mr. Parker?
Hi, Dan Parker. I live at 1723 21st Street Northwest, which is a property straight east, about 200, 300 feet east of the proposed cell tower location. I didn't bring any statistics regarding this, but Mr. Buell did say that statistics and SHUDI studies show that this may improve property value. I can state with 100% fact that that is not the case for my house. Many of these studies that he is referring to does show that these are places where the cell tower may already exist, not a location where they go and put a cell tower up next to a home, next to a golf course. And the reason I'm so sure about this is my house is currently for sale. When this came up last fall, under the advisement of a few realtors, we dropped my house $10,000 on the day we received the notification from East Grand Forks regarding the cell tower. The $10,000 dropped it below what I'm paying in market value taxes at this current time. Okay? So, state that this is improving my property value is absolutely false. It is hurting it, and it's fact. It's happening already without the tower even being there. Additionally, a couple of other things that I wanted to point out is, in the city zoning code, there's two things that I'm going to speak to more in-depth here. And the first one is, it's in your 152.317 Procedures Regarding Wireless Communications, Antennas, and Towers. Under Section C, it says applicants cannot be denied space on tower unless mechanical, structural, or regulatory factors prevent sharing. And the second, Section D, is least conspicuous placement. Efforts shall be made to utilize location for the proposed wireless communication tower, which results in the least conspicuous or most aesthetically pleasing installation possible. Well, I guess to those two things, I would say it does not appear that Verizon has done their due diligence to look for what is the least conspicuous placement, or even the least intrusive in their selection for process of tower placement. Who else has Verizon talked to about locations outside of Valley Gulf? Have they come to the city? You guys are the ones with all the property on the north end. The Valley Gulf owns, what, 3, 4, 5 acres? The city is the place with all the property, not Valley Gulf. Has Verizon went and checked the tower that's on the end of 20th and 3rd? That's just a hair over a mile, straight east of the location they're proposing. I have a good friend of mine that is a regional director for another telecommunications company. He's been with them over 20 years. He looked at the tower, and his quote is, "There is plenty of space on that tower for another carrier." I don't know what his qualifications are to make that statement, outside of the fact that he's been with another carrier for over 20 years. He's in the industry, he knows what telecommunications process looks like, and that tower certainly more than would suffice, in his opinion. Okay? That needs to be looked into further. Additionally, I would say, it's my understanding, the data presented to, is it Owl Engineering? By Verizon Wireless, only looked at the data from this one specific location. What happens if you move it 300 yards to the north between hole 9 and hole 3 T-box? Wait a second, that's city property, it's not Valley Gulf. So, let's move it 200 yards past that, onto Valley Gulf's property, which is where their existing clubhouse is at. What would the study show then? What would the study show if it went a half a mile to the northeast on city-owned property where it's not developed? Or if it went just over a mile, straight east, on that existing tower? I'm pretty certain, any study with the data supplied by Verizon would show that there's a need for the tower on the north end. You look at places like Opensignal.com that have what the signal strength is everywhere, the north end is not the issue. The south end is. And anybody with a cellphone that drives through East Grand Forks knows there's a big difference. The only reason these locations are being chosen, because it's easy for Verizon to get in there, and it's money in Valley Gulf's pocket. So, essentially, what it's coming down to, it's a decision that's against either the city, the taxpayers of the city of East Grand Forks, and Valley Gulf. Valley Gulf wants the money, and it's coming at the expense of citizens. There are other options for Verizon, the tower existing on 20th and 3rd, as well as other, more inconspicuous, using your guys' terminology here, the least conspicuous areas that are also less intrusive to taxpaying citizens of East Grand Forks. So, I'm asking the council members to deny this based off the fact that Verizon needs to go and do more research and find a more feasible location that will not negatively impact homeowners, either by eyesore, by financial liability that I'm already seeing by this, or look for more appropriate areas that aren't going to be hurting taxpaying citizens, as opposed to just putting money in the pocket of Verizon and Valley Gulf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Parker? Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Parker, did you want to have Megan have any of the materials that you have in the record?
Um, oh, I guess I really won't know.
I provided the other ones that you, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
You know what I will provide is, on behalf of Justin Strongy, you could not be here tonight, you did email a letter, several copies of the same letter right there, right over the right hand, at 1810 20th Street Northwest, which would be just on the south side of the tower.
Thank you.
My name is Gerard Neal, and I and my wife live at 1838 20th Street Northwest, just directly south of where the proposed tower would be located. My wife is not here today, she wanted to be, but she's been battling what appears to either be a cold, sinus infection, or potentially a walking pneumonia. Sorry about that. So, anyway, she's not here, but there's a few comments that I would like to make on her behalf. One of the things that I would like to do is to kind of go through the two pieces of information that I think contradict each other, or at least will document that placement of the tower is not the only spot that can be placed in the city on the north end of East Grand Forks, and also has inconsistencies on what the ordinances require. If I look at the Buell report, and this would be my exhibits, except, I don't know, Mr. Golstead, you probably go through and write things up like I do, and I have some notes on here. Not sure if that would be appropriate, but a couple of comments I have on Mr. Buell's report. He talks about this facility is to be used to fill a void. And up until, I would imagine, the revised report by Owl Engineering, that void was located south and east, basically closer to the Vogte Techno College, off of County Road 19 and Highway 220 North. And they talk about a lack of capacity. One of the things that became real apparent to me after I started having time to devote to what was going on. Originally, this was presented by Verizon. They wanted to upgrade their facilities and get ahead of the curve. And I think that that was true. And it was true for a variety of reasons, because they wanted to service a wider area. And when you go through and look at Mr. Buell's report, there's different spots in here that he talks about, we can go to, well, it's page 1, about halfway through it, Verizon Wireless, propagation maps. Right on the bottom, it says Verizon standards require 115 DBMs or less to establish and maintain a connection to the network. There's been no comparison to other cellphone providers. We don't have Sprint, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, or any of the other providers that appear to be having the problem. What the problem, I think, is, is that Verizon wants to utilize that as an excuse in order to cover or saturate markets that are either across the river or in a farther area. Number two, when they modified their foundation plan to increase the foundation to support two additional providers that is required to be provided on the cellphone tower, that will also increase the height by a minimum of 20 feet. So, now, we're not talking about a 65-foot tower anymore with a 5-foot antenna for lightning, or lightning rod, you can call it. We are now looking at at least, at least, an 85-foot tower, and now the lightning rod on top of that. One of the things that... Being fair and honest is one of the things that I've always tried to strive to be. And Mr. Buell's report, when he had this picture, so all of the council members, and I'll show the audience that it's here, this picture is what absolutely got me infuriated. That tree has been measured by Mr. Parker, and I'm sure he can come up here and verify, 42 to 43 feet high. He measured it three different times, from the base of the ground to the top of that tree. 42 to 43 feet. Is this an accurate representation of a 65-foot tower? It is lower than the trees. Photograph was either shopped, or it was intentionally, and it's not really, the tower is put in there to show what it's a dramatization of what that tower is going to look like. But it is appearing to be 38 feet to 37 feet high. If we go to a 65-foot tower, we are going to be near the top of the page. In order to comply with city ordinances, once that tower permit is granted, it will have to go at least 85 feet. Otherwise, it won't comply with current zoning regulations for East Grand Forks. They have to have other providers. That tower will then be off the top of this. It will be more than twice the height of what that tree is, or barely, nearly twice the height. One of the things that was made comment by planning and zoning is that they want to have foliage. They want to hide it. There's two trees. Two trees that are probably 50 feet away from that tower, 40 feet away from the tower. That's not foliage. At one of the work sessions, and I'm going to butcher his name, and I apologize, he's present, Garrett Lysick? Lysick? Lysick or Lysick? Lysick. Stated that when you have leaf on, moisture content in leaves, the cellphone tower reception is more difficult to go through all of that moisture. Wouldn't you then want a tower not close to trees? I realize that it's far enough away that the argument may be that it doesn't interfere. He also stated at the work session, Mr. Lysick, that the, he never went out and did a site inspection. He never verified any of the information provided by Verizon. He never did any independent analysis. And he also stated that he could only look at the information provided by Verizon. And I have some Supreme Court decisions, and I have the US Supreme Court decision, and I have some Eighth Circuit District Court cases that establish that that is not true. If you look at the city ordinances for East Grand Forks, you will notice that it is Section 10.22, subdivision 3, the procedure, there are five and a half pages on requirements. And one of the requirements is, is that the applicant is required, and this would be under general requirements. Paragraph 1A, the applicant is required to demonstrate that a suitable location is not available for the placement of an antenna on any existing structure within the geographic area to be served. That hasn't been done. Mr. DeMers is not here today, but I remember the last work session, he had asked repeatedly where the reports were, where the documentation was, to demonstrate that...
These viruses are bull. I would like to credit for that.
The current cellphone towers are required to accommodate at least two more carriers. Before a petition can be granted for either it be a special use permit, or for a tower permit, or for the construction of any kind of a facility with a cellular tower, or similar to that for data processing transmission, you have to go in and find other cellphone towers, and you have to send them a letter, and you have to wait for 30 days. If you still don't get it for 30 days, one of the things that the city can require is that the landowner, on behalf of the tower owner, if those two are different, they have to go in and get permission to put on their tower. And if they're going to be denied permission, then it's my interpretation of the city code, is that East Grand Forks can then revoke the permit of that existing tower holder, because they're not conforming with city ordinances by allowing other providers to be on a cellphone tower already in existence. And the reason for that is to either eliminate or reduce the number of cellphone towers, I shouldn't say eliminate, eliminate duplicate towers is what it amounts to, which makes sense. But you have the ordinances already in place, and they have not done their research, they have not done what they're supposed to do, there is another tower available that they could easily use. There are other locations, and I find it, let me finish Mr. Buell's report first, before I get off track. That misrepresentation, to me, is very important. If you, a person would walk out to where the elevation is on this area, from ground height where my home is, is exactly eight and a half feet, or actually eight feet, four inches lower. There should be, or there was, in 1997, in the northwest corner of the cart storage, there was a nail. And that nail marked the elevation height, which would be very close to what the top of the foundation is and the dirt on my house. By putting a cellphone tower in that area, they're already starting out eight feet lower. If they move it to a site that was originally proposed, up by the golf course in the south, where the clubhouse is, in the southeast corner, that would work fine, except there was no foliage. If this is truly a stealth tower, an invisible tower, then no one's going to see it up there either. There is another location, and it's up by the clubhouse. We all know why it's not being presented, because planning and zoning didn't want it there. Because planning and zoning doesn't want it, does not control. It's the city council that has the final say on that. I've also ran a court cases, when I started reviewing these, in most cases, planning and zoning has approved the permit, has given reasons for the permit, and the city council has shot it down. All over in the Eighth Circuit, not once that I was able to have my new attorney, Kent, vouch for myself, because I didn't do the research, not once, was that ever grounds by any appellate court to reverse the denial of that permit. Not once. Just because planning and zoning approves of it, that's just a recommendation. Not once has any court case that I was able to find ever stated that that, because they approved it, the city council has to approve it. When I look at Owl Engineering, there are many things that I think are telling. Starts out by saying that the wireless communication towers requires the demonstration of a need, a gap in coverage, or a showing of need for the proposal. They wouldn't be applying for it if they didn't somehow be able to show that. They're saying that the height requested is the minimum that would satisfy the coverage requirements. Automatic, what I was stating earlier, in order to comply with the ordinances, it's going to have to be increased by at least 20 feet, and they've already represented today that they have the foundation in order to do that. There are no existing towers or tall structures identified within the one mile that could be used to provide coverage. When the coverage data for registration for the search results that are attached to the report shows 10 of them, out of the 10, three are in East Grand Forks. One has been dismantled, and the other two have been constructed. There's been no representations made. My guess is, is that there's been no contact made with either Midwest towers or vertical bridge towers, to see if there would be a spot on either one of those towers. Now, I understand Owl Engineering said that they couldn't, if they were the towers north, they wouldn't be... they wouldn't be able to triangulate. But he also said in his report, and I find this one probably the most interesting of everything in his report, when he stated that, should be on the last page. He stated that there are, if there's another location, here we go, the executive summary. When he talks about no existing towers, the new site would need to locate very near the proposed location in order to fill the coverage gap. Right in his report, I've got it outlined in blue, it says that that, there's an alternative site. There are more than one alternative sites. The first alternative site is the southeast corner where the clubhouse is, because that's already been proposed by Verizon, and it was shot down by planning and zoning. The second option is going to be very near the location of the present site, and that'll be on city property. And council members would remind you that at one of the works, at the work session, and I made a comment, that I would do the legal work for free for the golf course, to substitute property, so that there would be another location that would not be intrusive, objectionable to other parts of the city in that area, I would do the legal work for free, by swapping it out, by exchanging land with the city, doing whatever was necessary. And that I was serious on. When you have city-owned land that is available, and it might be because of personal politics with the golf course, the board, I'm not certain. I have had conversations with a couple of the board members, and I'm led to believe there might be a rub between the city council, or some of the city councils, and the golf course board. If that's true or not, I don't know. I'm not saying that it is. But there is alternatives, and it's north, like Mr. Parker said, it's north of this site. It should also be east. The, the gap is east. If, the, the river is not placed in any of these maps. If you look at the addresses, it starts at Highway 220 North, and it runs to the east. How far, I don't know. And I know that Mr. Lysick was going to put the area in his report, what that size is. But that area is not what they're targeting. Verizon is targeting a much larger area to service it. That area has to be south of our area, because there's not enough users in that area to justify the expense of putting into this, putting up this tower. It's going to be either across the river, or to the point area, or something significant. And if that is the case, then this obviously is not the place to put it. There are other spots. They just have not looked for them, and they have not found them. If they go across the river, it's been represented to me by someone, that there's an owner of property in an industrial area in North Dakota, very close to Old Mill Road, that would be more than happy to put a tower over in that area. The height would probably be higher, but they would get their triangulation, and that would be in an industrial area, which would be more fitting. Even in the executive summary of OWL Engineering, they're talking about the tower must accommodate three additional systems in order to comply. And Verizon obviously are aware of that, and they're starting their process now of going in and increasing the height of the tower by increasing the foundation. On page five of OWL Engineering is areas where the signal level is poor, that's on the reception, that's going to do with foliage, if there's a lot of foliage. So also, when you are receiving or sending that signal from a tower, it makes common sense that foliage around it, or if you are going to be putting that tower in a lower elevation, that is also going to affect its reception. In other words, increase the height of the tower again. Page four of his reports, all he did was look at the documents submitted by Verizon. When you look at the city code, the ordinances for wireless communication towers and antennas, that's not what is required. What is required, that the application for placement, the construction, the applicant has to look at other available sites. And having a rubber stamp approval by an independent agency that the documentation submitted by Verizon shows that there's a need for a tower. Everything I've said so far, all of these reports, does not show, this is the only spot. And their reports show, Mr. Buell's shows, it's up by the golf course, clubhouse, and OWL Engineering shows that it must be within a very near distance, which is a very wide circumference, six hundred, nine hundred feet. City ordinances require that the tower be at least two hundred feet away from a residential structure. OWL Engineering says it's a hundred and ninety feet. Ten feet, does it matter? I don't know. The height of the tower, maybe it will. The work session, there was representations made by OWL Engineering, that they looked at all these existing towers. Tower up on Twentieth, a tower in another location, there were four north of East Grand Forks, height, those were not looked at. I don't know, in looking at his information here, when he shows the location of these towers, looks to me like he gives latitude and longitude. So there's only two in East Grand Forks, but he itemizes, or states, two in Grand Forks that are constructed, that would be operational, Burlington Northern, State of North Dakota. They are not subject to East Grand Forks regulations to require that they build there. I did not take the time, or have the time, to see what their regulations are, but at this point, it doesn't matter. We have our own regulations that they must comply with. I found it interesting, when they talk about the coverage study by OWL Engineering, in reviewing the submitted data, it was determined that Verizon has designed its communication facilities in the East Grand Forks area, with several surrounding sites providing area-wide coverage. So, don't know what that means, and I'm sure he'll come up here later and explain it, or explain it away. But it tells me that this is going to be a tower, not for this gap area. It's going to be for a much larger, larger area. And that's not what these towers are designed to be, and that's not in compliance with our city code is required to, and planning and zoning is required to, which I'll get into in a minute. On page seven of OWL Engineering, on the bottom, they talk about there is no predicted interference intermodulation products generated from combinations of existing or proposed channels at the site. When the proposed communication facility is constructed, antenna separation, pattern directionality properties, and equipment filtering will further reduce the potential of intermodulation induced interference. This analysis is a mathematical study, and will not account for interference mitigation that will occur due to the differences in technologies and equipment configurations and filtering. They assumed a worst-case scenario. So what does it mean? No calculation's been made with respect to the other two users that will be required if they want to locate in that area. If that is going to increase the problem, or are they going to have to make the tower higher to get more than that ten feet of separation between their equipment? On page eight, he says, using the data submitted by Verizon Wireless, we performed a worst-case radiation. Yep, radiation is one of those that, like I said before, nobody knows. We can't, city council cannot reject or refuse it because of the radiation, because of the RF problems, because it's not substantiated. There's been no substantiation, that there isn't, and there is. So, time will tell. It has to be live human subjects that will be exposed to the radiation that will determine it. One of the things that has been omitted from anybody's conversation up until now is the generator. And I understand that the generator is necessary for off-peak, or I should say offline, if there's a power failure, monthly testing. That is, no evidence, no information is giving as to, given as to what the decibels will be, what rating will be off of that generator. Some of you know where my office is, it's right across from the fire department. Fire department has a generator. The generator for the fire department is inside the building. I can tell. My walls are very well insulated, we have a very quiet office. I can tell instantly when that generator is running. That generator is going to have to have fuel. Will it be propane, with propane tanks sitting outside? Or are they going to pipe in natural gas? Or will it be diesel fuel? What will be the fuel capacity if it's diesel fuel? To retain enough time to run that generator, to keep the cellphones and the communications system operational. There's been no evidence, there's been nothing that that's going to be quiet. Out in the country, there's plenty of cases on farmers starting their grain dryers, the decibels that are created. Generators make noise. What's the kilowatt-hours? What's the requirements? That hasn't been addressed. They talk about credible studies to support the claims, and I've talked to people, that the value of your property does not increase. And I had one person tell me, in the hundreds of appraisals that I have seen, not one have I ever seen a deduction for the placement of a cell tower. And that caused me to immediately respond, and to think about the trip that I took back from Minneapolis, when I was down there after the work session. And I decided to take pictures of some cellphone towers on areas in Bloomington. And I'll just keep one of these. Here's a grocery store, and this is off of France. And it was in an area where there would be a grocery store, and there was some other property, that there was a road going through, and it was a major road, and to the west of that road was a bear area, park. When you looked at the tower, and you, we drove around, and I took picture on the backside of it, looking at the tower at the base. And I also calculated these rungs. I'm anticipating they're about twelve inches, maybe fourteen inches high, between the rungs. That would show that this tower would be somewhere around forty to forty-five feet. Now, I understand that the proposed tower is not going to have all of the apparatus that is on this cellphone tower, and these pictures here are of one cell, of one cell tower. This is the same cell tower from the backside. And when you look at the height of that, that's forty-five feet, on the east side of it and on the south side of it, there's a buffer that goes up about twenty, twenty-five feet, and there's residential, probably five hundred to six hundred feet away. And yes, they have that in that area, but it is not anywhere near that's going to be a residential setting. Here's just some of the notices that are posted on the cellphone tower at the base of the tower. And I thought I had a picture showing the, the lower part of it, where there was some additional, here we go. That's what a base looked like for that particular tower. And you can see that that, that tower has a significant amount of apparatus. This tower is going to have a twenty-by-thirty building. They say eleven and a half by twenty-nine and a half. Not certain why you would build a structure out of half a foot, eleven and a half, because typically you'll build a structure on divisible by four feet or by two feet. So that half, that's six inches, don't know what it is, but I'm sure I could figure it out by asking the right people, why that would be, why that would be that odd size. Again, on the summary, the second spot in OWL Engineering, it says, due to the lack of any existing towers or adequate, adequate support structures in the vicinity, of which we already know that there's been at least one tower, if not more, that have not been considered. And we also have this same report stating that there's at least another location within the reasonable area, and we have the applicant's report that says it's in the southeast corner of the clubhouse. The other site would be, the site would need to locate very near to the proposed location to fill the coverage gap. That's your answer right there. They, they haven't done it, they haven't done their responsibilities to look at and find another spot. They have not gone through, and their reports even say, both of them, that there are other Some of the things I'd like to note on Section 1022, subdivision three of the city's wireless communications towers and antennas.
Excuse me, Dr. Art. So, I don't want to interrupt, I'm not sure what you're citing, so at least I have it.
I was going to introduce that, Mr. Golsom. When the application is initially looked at, planning and zoning is going to discuss development alternatives, determine the appropriate review procedure, and go through all of those things. They did, and they decided that an alternate location, they didn't like, because there's not enough trees. Again, if this is a stealth tower, why do you need trees? If it's going to be a flagpole, and even in one of the reports, it stated that the golf course was going to put a flag, either a golf course flag, or the US flag on the tower. So if that's the case, wouldn't that be ideal to put it on this, this pole at the club, at the golf course where the clubhouse is? They're supposed to have on the applications, the placement of the wireless communication antenna shall include, complete set of plans, specifications, written form, proof of ownership, four items. Application for construction of the tower shall include, complete set of plans and specifications, the structural integrity, the general capacity of the tower, signed up by a registered engineer. And maybe their thirty-page, part of the, is, is part of that. I doubt that they have all their plans and specifications, but they're supposed to be providing that, and proof of ownership. The only thing that I was able to see is an allegation that there's a lease agreement. And if there's going to be a lease agreement, the ordinances require that you have to have an agreement by the landowner, that it'll accommodate up to three. They have to have eighty-five feet in height, or at least to accommodate the additional cellphone carriers. At this point, anything that's been submitted, I haven't seen it unless it's part of the record that Mr. Golsom talked about earlier. Those are the application requirements. Let's look at the general requirements, which is under Section D. The planning department and the planning commission shall consider, and the applicant shall demonstrate, compliance with the following. Number A, basically talks about the applicant is required to demonstrate that a suitable location is not available for the, for the placement of an antenna on any of the existing structures within the geographic area to be served. They haven't done that. If we look at the rest of that paragraph, they're supposed to talk to other cellphone owners, they're supposed to contact them, they must show that it is requested to co-aid on, co-locate on an additional tower and provide a letter from them. That hasn't been done. That hasn't been done. B, wireless communication facilities. Talks about contacting other owners, other cellphone providers. The last part, the last sentence of Subdivision B, "In all cases, it shall be the intent of the city to encourage the co-location of transmitting facilities," again, to prevent multiple towers. Under number C, "As a condition of issuing the permit to construct or operate a tower, the applicant is required to submit an affidavit stating that space on the proposed tower will be made available to future users when technically possible. Applicants cannot be denied space on a tower unless mechanical, structural, or regulatory factors prevent sharing." If it is required for a new tower, and you look at your ordinances, it is also required for an existing tower. If you have an existing tower, they have to go there first. There has to be, under number C, they talk about, "Written documentation must be presented to the planning commission evidencing the landowner of the property in which the tower is to be located has agreed to the terms, as well as to the requirements, regulations, and standards." That's supposed to be in the lease agreement. And the city can require, "An owner-operator of a tower is required to allow co-locations of wireless communication facilities until the tower has reached full antenna capacity." Again, there's other towers in the area, they haven't done that. This one, general requirements, Paragraph 1D. "Efforts shall be made to utilize a location for the proposed wireless communication tower, which results in the least conspicuous or most aesthetically pleasing installation possible while still providing reasonable signal access." The best choice would be within a reasonable distance, as Owl Engineering says, north of or east of, or northeast of this proposed site. That's the solution. And it's unfortunate that finances of one of the applicants appears to be the motivating factor. I don't like the idea of any business failing. I'm not saying that any business is going to fail, but that's the motivation behind it. And the motivation behind that is not a justifiable reason to locate it where they want it. There are alternatives. I offered alternatives. I reached out to the city. I called Mr. Galston. He didn't know what I was calling about. I reached out to one of the board members on Valley Golf and reiterated it again after the working session. Number E on that same subsection, "As a condition of issuing a permit to place a commercially utilized antenna in a residential zoning district, the applicant is required to provide proof that no suitable locations exist for a tower or antenna facility within any other permitted use or special use areas in the local code." The reports say there's nothing else available. Read the reports, they both say otherwise. Both reports, golf course, club property, or within a reasonable distance of this site. There's certain wireless communication towers, there's height and setback, it goes on for five some pages, and I'm not going to bore you with that, but that is something that also has not been addressed. I only want to address a couple of court cases before I'm done, and I'm sure somebody's wondering why I keep rattling off and talking. No, I'm not getting paid, I'm not billing by the hour or anything like that. A little bit of history. The Telecommunications Act in 1996, which was really a modification of an earlier act from the 70s, was to foster competition among telecommunications providers to improve the quality of the services and to encourage the rollout of new technologies without delay. Congress wanted to reduce the amount of interference by local governments with tower construction while preserving the authority of local governments over decisions about, number one, tower placement, number two, construction, number three, modification. And the code cite on that is 47 U.S. Code, Section 332, Subdivision C, Subdivision 7, Capital B, Capital I. "Local governments shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provisions of personal wireless services." And that's that same code section, except it's double I at the very end. This means that an applicant, application can be not denied if the proposed facility is the least intrusive means of closing a significant gap in wireless coverage. That's Orange County, that's a Southern District, got a New York case, that's out of the Eighth Circuit Court for Minnesota. But when you look at cellphone towers, their placement, there's kind of two factions. The Eighth Circuit is in kind of one uncertain things, and the Southern District, Eastern District, Western District are kind of in another. But for all intents and purposes, unless it hits to the Supreme Court, the law of the land will be in what that judicial district is, or Circuit Court district is. Probably, there's a Tower and Wireless versus Hadded out of Massachusetts. Says, "The applicant bears the burden of proof and must show they investigated thoroughly the possibility of other viable alternatives before concluding no other feasible plan was available." That burden requires the applicant to prove, not just in this application, that it's been rejected, but that further reasonable efforts to find another solution are so likely to be fruitless that it is a waste of time to even try. Well, I propose that they fail to even try before they try to comply with city ordinances. In order to prove that there has been an effective prohibition, so city councils cannot effectively prohibit cellphone towers. The provider must demonstrate that there's a gap in coverage. Well, they've alleged there's a gap in coverage, but they have to prove it. You can't just say there's a gap in coverage. And when you look at, I think it's the Beale Report, there's a spot in there that it talks about a greater area of coverage that they're trying to cover. And the provider has explored all reasonable alternatives that may be a less intrusive way to fill the gap. Both of their reports state that. There's other sites available, there's other spots available. That was the USCOC of Greater Missouri versus the City of Missouri, or Ferguson, which is in Missouri. I think everybody recognizes the City of Ferguson. That's also in the Eighth Circuit District Court. If the applicant is going to prove the existence of a significant gap in coverage, there's no magical number, no magical percentages. That's that Orange County case. Courts will consider the gap's physical size, the number of customers affected by the gap, the location of the gap, drop call, or failure rates. That hasn't been presented. None of that has been presented. That's Indus Tower. They may also consider gap in outdoor, or the effect in-vehicle, in-building coverage. And there's been a general allusion to that by Owl Engineering, but there's been no proof documentation submitted on that. There's a gap in coverage. If you look at one of the reports, they say that there's still 70% coverage. So it's not destitute. It's not that there isn't any coverage. It's according to Verizon standards that they only meet 70% of their coverage. And that's, I think, in Beale's report. Additionally, in that Missouri case, this is another Missouri case, same cellphone provider from 2009. "The provider must show they have made a good faith effort to identify and evaluate less intrusive alternatives, including less sensitive sites, an alternate system, tower designs, and placement of the antenna on existing structure." That's federal law in the Eighth Circuit. The USCOC of Greater Missouri versus the Village of Marlborough, the court held, the Court of Appeals held, "The applicant must show," I'll take that back, I don't know if it was a Court of Appeals or if that was the District Court. Didn't really matter. The court held, "The applicant must show the proposed site was the only location for a cellular tower that would remedy the coverage issue." Only remedy? That hasn't been documented. An applicant has not established their proposal if, is the, is the least intrusive means, if an applicant may select a less sensitive site, they may select a less sensitive site, reduce the tower height, use a pre-existing structure, or camouflage the tower or antenna. They have all of those options. They don't qualify. They have to qualify under the, being prohibited by the city. And I don't think Verizon has established that at this point on anything that they have submitted, that they don't have another alternative. If they show that they don't have another alternative, they also have to show unreasonable discrimination. And they must provide that the local authority, that's the city council for East Grand Forks, has discriminated amongst providers of functionally equivalent services, and that these providers were treated unequally. That holding of the case was set up for favoring one cellphone provider over another. I don't know of T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Sprint, anybody else asking for tower space except for Verizon. Actually granting the petition would unfavorably favor Verizon. They have other places to go, but still, you would be unfavorably favoring them because nobody else is asking for it. They're not at a competitive disadvantage. That hasn't even been alleged, that hasn't even been stated by them. There are a couple of prongs to determine if there's a functionally equivalent. It requires that it's showing that the other provider is similarly situated, that the structure, placement, or cumulative impact of the existing facility makes them as or more intrusive than the proposed facility. There's no other facility in the area. So there's no other cellphone carrier, provider, that's being favored by denying Verizon their permit. The second prong requires an analysis of whether there is unreasonable discrimination among various providers by a governmental body. They've not alleged that, they've not shown that. They can't do that. I don't see how they are being discriminated against because they have a gap. I do want to talk about a case because I thought, when I got to the end of it, this can't be. And this has to be that USCOC of Greater Missouri versus the Village of Marlborough, Missouri. And what this case stands for, it's in the Eighth Circuit Court, we're in the Eighth Circuit Federal Court. It was the provider, the USCOC, made an application, or they were going to go and make an application. And they talked to planning and zoning, and they said, "Nah, we really don't want you here." And went and talked to the city attorney. City attorney says, "No, no, we're not going to approve you putting it on this spot." This spot happened to be where a McDonald's restaurant used to be. So I don't know, they expanded, moved, whatever, but it used to be a site for a McDonald's restaurant. They kind of pushed, and they said, "Well, we really want it there for a variety of reasons." And they explained the reasons, and the city attorney said, "Well, let me put it to you this way. If you put your cellphone tower on city-owned property, all we require is a lease with the cellphone company and the city." "What are the terms?" "Well, they just got to be approved by the city council." It doesn't say, but I assume the terms were addressed by the city council and told to the cellphone provider, and they said, "Well, we don't want to do that. We want to locate where McDonald's are." So they said, "Well, okay, if you're going to do that, you got a $2,000 application fee, you got to have plans and specifications." And essentially, they went through a lot of the items that are listed in City of East Grand Forks ordinance requirements. And they denied it. You don't have, your application is not complete, you can't do that, we're going to deny it. Two days later, they denied it, didn't even give them a chance to supplement their application. They had a hearing a couple of weeks later, and they said, "No, we're going to deny it, it's incomplete, don't comply." So then, oh, by the way, they had to make a $2,000 application fee. So like, six weeks later, they revised their application and applied again, they said, "Oh, you got to put, you got to put in another $2,000 application fee." They went in and covered everything that was in the ordinance, they denied it again, they filed an appeal, they go up on appeal, and the court says, "Just because you don't like the terms of what the lease agreement is, and because the city favored themselves over a private spot, that's not being unfairly treated." And the denial of the permit was upheld. They argued due process, they argued the duplicate fee, they said it's not fair, if you do it on your property, we only have to sign a lease and pay you X number of dollars if we go over here, we got to jump through all these hoops, we have to cover everything else. Court says, "That's fine, you can favor yourself. Doesn't matter." And I'm not suggesting that's what the city should do, or that's what they're going to do. I'm just telling you that we already had a city that did it. And that case wasn't too old, April of 2009, has not been overruled or distinguished or anything, as far as I know. And I would ask that the city council at next week's meeting, that you vote to deny the petition. The tower does not comply with city ordinance, not only in the height, the lease agreement, the number of providers, any written agreement, access to the property, but most importantly, and it is allowable under federal law, the Telecommunications Act, that the location, placement, construction, modification is totally within your control as long as you're not discriminatory. Unless you want to tell them that they got to put it on city-owned property, and there's a Missouri case that says you can do that. But they haven't, their own reports, that's probably the most important thing, their own reports, Beale's says, they tried another location, city shot them down, and Owl Engineering says it's got to be within a reasonable area of the existing site. There's two. Both of their reports say that. That's probably the most important thing. The telecommunications requires substantial evidence. And essentially, what that means is that the city council, if you are voting, know with clarity, and you can, your advisor's, Mr. Galston, not me, but as a citizen, you're required under that act to have a written agreement or a written statement substantially and close in time, there was one case 26 days later, doesn't count, where you need to have it in writing in your reasons for the denial. And the basic reasons are, they have not complied with the ordinance, they're going to put in a much higher tower, they have two other, if not three other, locations that they have the ability to place it, they just don't want to put it there, because I think what they're trying to do is to be good neighbor and help out somebody that's in financial trouble. And that's not a legal reason to grant the petition. I will, I'll ask Mr. Galston, I'm not going to give you my notes, do you have any problems if I introduce or provide that as an exhibit with my handwriting and anything?
No, go ahead.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Neal?
I have one question, at the risk of not going along 15 more minutes. Have you gone to Valley Golf Board and addressed any of your concerns with them?
After, it was, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would have been, yes, the answer is yes. Yeah, that's right, it was a December meeting, and then I followed up after that with Valley Golf. Well, I could give you, I can give you my exact date if you want, but yes, I did, yes, we did. There were, I think, five or six of us that went up there to a board meeting, expressed our concerns, and again, I offered to do the legal work for free in February, when I had a conversation with one of the board members, I again offered to do the work for free, to make sure that it would work, so that everybody could come out of this without, you know, creating any hard feelings, and still try to, everybody try to resolve it. I did do that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Appreciate it, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Any other citizens like to come forth and, for the public hearing? Is there any questions from? Is there any questions from council at this time? Any none?
The only thing I was going to say is, did Mr. Lisick want to address any of the issues regarding placement, tower, interference, any of those types of things?
Mr. President, the members of the council, I need to set the record straight, first of all. Number one...
State your name.
Garrett Lisick, Alou Engineering, Shoreview, Minnesota. This report was generated using data that I obtained myself. The only data Verizon supplied to me would be their location of their present sites that they're using, the heights and the power levels. Other than that, everything else was generated by engineering and official documents. There's been a lot of wild accusations, and I want to set the record straight. In my executive summary, I stated, for example, the tower had to be higher to accommodate two additional users. That was not saying that the tower at 65 feet wouldn't accommodate two additional users. What I was trying to explain to the city was, if you try to put two users on a 65-foot tower, they probably wouldn't go on because it wouldn't provide them with any reasonable coverage. And what you'd wind up having is a request for a tower in that area if they needed it. So, my idea was to advise the city that if they want to have two other additional users on that tower and stop another tower from coming in, it might be prudent to just add 20 feet to the tower right now and eliminate that thing in the future. When I looked at the existing towers in the area, I had a look at towers that were registered with the FCC and FAA. If they're not registered, to me, they're not there, even though they could be lower in there. In my last meeting, some of the residents brought up the Crown Castle Tower. Unfortunately, that tower's not registered. It's not in any database. I did include it in my amended report, and I definitely... I turned it on as if Verizon was on there, and I had to exclude it because it would cause interference to an existing Verizon site. It's too close to a different site. That doesn't say Verizon couldn't use it in the future for a capacity site, but they would have to really change their directions on their antennas and go through a lot of things. It would be a capacity site. And the idea that there's other towers potential in the area, when I said there are other... The tower has to be located in that close vicinity, what I was trying to project to the city was, I'm looking at a spot that is proposed by the applicant. I can't play what-ifs and start looking for spaces to go. I just try to let the city know that you can move it a couple hundred feet if the applicant requests it, but I have to look at what's presented as the application. Terms of the health things, RF radiation, I did a worst-case study, meaning that cell towers are designed, operate on the horizon horizontally. They're not designed, operate pointing straight down. So, when I do my analysis, I assume that the antenna is pointing straight down, worst-case, and I give it maximum power, and that gives me a number. So, it's not a fantasy that I came up with. I did an actual engineering study and said it complies with all FCC rules, worst-case. It won't cause interference. And when you look at my amended report, I changed the signal analysis to include the Crown Tower, and I tried to make it so the city can look at it and see that, how Verizon designs their system and what they're trying to accomplish. I made the assumption, you put the tower at the Crown, co-located on Crown Castle Tower, it's clear, it doesn't work. It's too far away. It's over 1.2 miles away. There are a couple of towers to the north, and they're over four miles away, so I didn't even include them. The Verizon search ring is typically a quarter of a mile, half a mile, tops. They're looking at an area, and this happens to be on the very edge of the circle. So, talking to Verizon, I asked them how many sites they looked at, and it's my opinion, they exhausted every existing state, or they couldn't find a site that the owner was willing to give them a lease. That's an ingredient that you have to deal with. If you get a spot that works, but the owner of the property won't give you a lease, it's not worth anything. You can't put a tower up if the guy doesn't want to give you a lease for it. My professional opinion is, looking at the data and my analysis, Verizon has a gap in their system coverage. The proposed location does satisfy that need, also with capacity issue. The existing towers in the area that are there do not provide the coverage that Verizon is looking for. And that's about as simple as I can make it. And you have any questions for me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions? Any none, sir? Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the public hearing? You have a question?
A motion? You're ready?
We're not voting. Does anybody else have any questions or comments during the public hearing? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to... Oh, hang on a second. Could either Mr. Parker or Megan read that letter into record that you gave, turned in?
Can you have me read it?
Yeah, please.
You can. It'll actually be a part of the exhibits, so...
That's fine, but I'd like to have him read it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, this is on behalf of Justin Stromy, who lives at 1810 20th Street Northwest. Dear East Grand Forks City Council, as a proud East Grand Forks resident for the last 10 years, I am writing regarding my concern for the placement of a cellphone tower in the parking lot of the former clubhouse location. At that time, 10 years ago, I had a choice to live in Grand Forks or East Grand Forks and chose East Grand Forks because of the neighborhood layouts and openness. When I purchased my property, I never envisioned that a city government would allow for a cellphone tower in my backyard that would obstruct my view and impact the quality of life. Lighting required. I am still hopeful that the City Council has the back of the citizen over a business that is trying to develop the cheapest possible option. I do not feel that anyone involved in the process has truly and meaningfully explored other options. The most telling comment came at one of the planning meetings when one of the golf course representatives admitted that they do not want the tower near the golf course because of the aesthetics. Point taken. If the course needs the revenue, then put the tower next to the clubhouse and let Verizon develop the property to meet their needs. It is clear to me during this process that the citizens who have been notified of the potential tower are not in favor of it. It is your choice to choose between the citizen and a large corporation. Respectfully, Justin Stromy.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Galstead, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, just ask that they make a motion to adjourn this to March 27th for a discussion and decision.
I'll make that motion.
Read by Mr. Pachivinsky, they adjourn till March 27th. Second by Mr. Reapel. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll the same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting adjourned to the 27th of March.
No, no, we've adjourned it. We're not going to have to.
No. Just wanted to make sure. Move on to agenda, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action they choose. Any council member like any items polled 5 through 8. I see none. I entertain a motion to approve 5 through 8, please. Move. Read by Reapel.
Second.
Second by Grassall. Roll call.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassall?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged receipts of reports and officers, boards, and commissions for regular meeting minutes of water, light, power, and building commissions for February 15th, 2018. Communications, none. Old business, none. New business. Number 10, consider adoption resolution number 18-03-12 approving the promotion of Ryan Swann, engineer at salary of $28.10 per hour. Read by Tweeten.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassall?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 11, consider approving the final plot of Sandy's first re-subdivision with the conditions of submitting a digital file to the planning office and paying the fee to Polk County for recording.
Both.
Read by Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Grassall. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassall?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider approving the zoning code amendments to establish new permitted and special uses within the zoning districts of East Grand Forks. First reading. Move. Read by Vetter. Second by Pachivinsky. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify, since the work session, that I removed the duplication of our galleries and museums, and I added to our downtown commercial through industrial, limited industrial brew pubs, brewer trap rooms, micro distilleries, and cocktail rooms based on our licensing requirements that the city has. Those are the definitions. So, those were added. So, if anybody has any questions on the rest.
Anybody have any questions at this time? I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassall?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing City Minister, Clerk, Treasurer to issue payment of recon bills and payroll. Move. Read by Reapel.
Second.
Second by Grassall. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassall?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mir Gander.
Last week, we had the pleasure, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Olstead, Mr. Tweeten, and I had the pleasure of traveling to St. Paul to visit with our elected officials. If you remember, a year ago, as the session concluded, we received our bonding bill that paid for the interconnect. We received the tax bill, which paid for the improvements on the swimming pool. The legislature worked hard on these items. The governor signed them. And the main crux of our trip, then, was to go down and say, "Thank you for the hard work." We met with our elected officials, including Senator Mark Johnson, Representative Deb Keel, and we met with representatives and senators from other districts that were very close to the process going through. And I will let the folks down there, others who participated, speak to that. Then, it turns out that Mr. Tweeten and Governor Dayton go way back. Mr. Tweeten got a special invitation to the State of the State address. I did not get such a special invitation. But I was able to go as a guest of Representative Keel. And I was able to locate Mr. Tweeten after the meeting, coming out of the governor's office. I was supposed to be his shadow, and I was not doing my job. I couldn't go where he went because they had a little reception beforehand that I wasn't invited to be part of. And so, when the thing ended, he came out of a place that I wasn't really welcome, except when the door opened. He said, "Come on in here. I want you to meet the governor." And so, we met the governor, and Mr. Tweeten will say a few things about that, but it was kind of nice because, you know, Mr. Tweeten can be fairly persistent. I don't know if you all have noticed that or not, but he has that ability to be fairly persistent. And as we spoke to the governor, he invited him to come and visit. And the governor did say that after the session ends, that he will make a visit up here. And so, we'll see. I mean, it was a flurry of a lot of things happening, and it might be difficult for him to follow through, but we're going to work on that. And knowing the persistence of Mr. Tweeten, I think it will happen. And so, it was a good trip. And again, you all can speak to the trip that we had. The really, the nice thing is, so often, we go with our handout for something we need from the legislature. This time, we really went to say, "Thank you," and it was very well received. So...
Mr. Vetter. Just hang on a second. Mr. Vetter? I don't have anything this week. Mr. Pachivinsky?
Next year, we'll have our handout. That's all.
Ah, there you go.
Mr. Reapel?
Nothing.
Mr. Tweeten?
I'd like to make some comments. One of the things you probably don't realize is that Governor Dayton is a personal friend of mine. He got started in politics. He made a call to me when he was first starting from Duluth. So, he's been a personal friend. He sees me at least once or twice a year, and I have great respect for him. And one of the things that we got him to agree to was to come to the tech school after the session. And I've suggested that we'll set a date. It'll be sometime after the 15th of August when school starts. Now, this is strictly a question of visiting the school. It's an educational visit. And it's an interesting thing. I've had him come here twice in East Grand Forks, and he always paid for the meal. And the last time that we saw him, he said, "One thing I liked about East Grand Forks, the food is real good." So, I told him, I says, "I owe him a couple meals." So, it's important that he comes up here. He's one of the two educational governors of the state. Wendy Anderson was a personal friend of mine, and we got the last AVTI, which is now Northland Community Technical College. And they... Governor Mark Dayton is the second educational governor. There's no question that he's one of the people that have made a big change in education. Now, for the benefit of the people who are here, I started pushing for education. I was asked by group in the North End to get river heights, and it's a very extensive thing. We are going to be meeting at the tech school in a few weeks with a group from the Grand Forks Air Base. We're going to be training, hopefully, a number of people there. And I and the mayor will make that report. I'm working on some other growth things for the tech school, which will be very, very important to the tech school. But we will have the same delegation meeting the governor, with one exception, we'll have Megan Nelson to accompany us to make sure we behave real well and represent the city real well. So, sometimes, we need a little guidance, so... But I think that it's important that we contact the various people in city government. There's one thing that we did, our group, we met with both Republicans and Democrats, and they were very cordial. Mr. Murphy gave them a paper document, and they thanked all of the people for their help in various matters. And I think it's the first time it ever happened to some of these people. But I'd like to make one comment. We need a storm shelter down in the park, and that's one thing. It's going to have to be enlarged because we get a lot of community reunions there. And it's important that we get one large enough. I've been told that the fire station gets filled up, but the fire station doesn't give you much protection. We need pre-stress concrete or something. But the mayor and the president of the council and our city administrator will keep you informed and we will have to do a number of things. And I don't know, maybe you want to make some more comments?
Just one last thing. The governor must know about Red River Valley potatoes because the one thing he said he wants when he comes here is french fries.
And maybe the president wants the same thing. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, Mr. Grassall.
Just a couple of things. I will say this. I'm glad I'm not a lawyer because there's too many speech classes you'd have to take.
One thing my mother used to say as a little kid, one good thing about Henry, though, he always tells the truth when he was talking to a bunch of her friends.
The other thing I'd like to just throw a thank out to Keith and his crew. They were at South Point today, out at the elementary school. They brought some people from the cities. It was the best group of people that we've had present and I know that our kids loved it and it's always good to bribe them with pizza, too. So that was a good thing, so. Thank you.
I'll touch a couple of things on our trip down to St. Paul. Yeah, we got to meet, we met with Mr. Fabian, also Mr. Ekin. And Mr. Ekin actually said, just like Henry alluded to, that he normally doesn't get people coming in and thanking him. It's usually coming in and asking for something, so it was kind of nice. He said to sit down and talk to us, although, you know, Henry, he starts talking and a bunch of us, we had ran out of time, so... But that was a good trip. Good discussion we had with a lot of people. It was good to get in front of them again and especially thank them and let them know that everything's going great. And we look forward to going down again and talking about LGA. We kind of steered away from that a little bit. We did mention it some, but something we need to work on, especially upcoming next couple of years with that. And it's amazing to find out that only Democrats can do anything, so I don't know if the Republican governors could ever did anything, so we kind of like them, too. But other than that, it was good to go down, so. Mr. Murphy?
I believe everything has been said, so I'm going to pass.
Mr. Galstead?
I was just going to say, if anybody has any questions regarding what's in the record or anything regarding what was presented here tonight, just feel free to give me a call and I'll answer any questions that are possibly there.
Mr. Tiberi?
On Thursday, from noon to 1:00, WSN is providing a taco and bag lunch for all city staff and council members. We're asking for either free will donation, a food item. All proceeds raised from the luncheon will be provided to the local food shelf, so please come out and help us support the food shelf.
Anything?
It's here from down in the training room from noon to 1:00.
Anybody else, Department of Ed's have anything to add tonight?
I'd like to speak to Mike after. Harold, report.
You got your orders. Anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Goodbye, Tweeten.
Second.
Second by Grassall. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion is carried. Means adjourn.
Thanks for the Thursday thing. We'll be organized. Somewhat.